To call this meeting of the Willett City Council, June 26, 2019, to order. And now, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep.
Strong.
Here.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Here. All right. Public Communications. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard to expedite matters and avoid repetition whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter. The mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Is there anybody from the public? All right. Read all that. Now, item three, Discussion Proposed Adoption of Fiscal Year 2019-20 Budget Financial and Operational Policies and Master Classification Schedule for the City of Willett's.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have before you today our next fiscal year's budget. We have had three workshops and have discussed this extensively. I believe we're ready to, I believe that you're ready to pass a budget. And June Do is our Finance Director, and she will be able to answer any further questions you may have. Otherwise, I hope that you move forward and we can pass a budget.
I'm just waiting for the questions.
I'd also like to commend our Finance Director for really doing an outstanding job on this budget. She, yeah, this budget used to be about 20 pages long, and there were many technical requirements for a budget under the finance, the state finance, Office of Finance Directors, and June is very careful to make sure that all the requirements were met. And I'm very proud of her for doing that. Thank you.
I have a couple of very, pretty minor questions. On page 65 for this swimming pool, I wasn't sure why the revenue source is $10,000 more than the total cost listed.
What is it? The revenue source has come from general fund. The $10,000 is the, the cover for the swimming pool. It will be come from the capital Olay Fund, the Fund 400. So general fund is only $88,000, which cover the salary and benefit and service supplies. The CIP, the $10,000 swimming pool cover, because it reached the limit of $10,000 for us, what I called fixed asset schedule, so that's why I transfer to the capital Olay Fund. So that's also start out in the.
But with the $10,000, the total is $78,000, so.
No, that $10,000 is not include in that $78,000. The $10,000 is the capital Olay Fund.
Well, it looks like it is included. You can do the math.
Yeah.
That one should be moved out, because those are, those are for swimming pool cover. So it's different.
So then.
Yeah, we'll revise that. I will take that out.
Just seems like members don't quite know that.
Yeah, I've tried to kind of notice this $10,000 is specific for swimming pool. It's kind of like a part of swimming pool budget. However, that's all of my intention to put up there the $10,000. But for operating budget, no, that should not, if we consider operating budget, I should not put the $10,000 in there. Well, I could take that out or put it in, but I just want council to notice we do do some, you know, big purchases in this swimming pool.
Right.
That's my intention. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna revise that, the total, add that $10,000 in. Also, I will do the revenue source, and I will put the capital Olay Fund for $10,000.
Let me ask a quick question. So it is all from the general fund, though, and it is identified as a CIP and transfer out. So is that, is that a problem? Because it's, it appears to be even with last year's budget, except for the $10,000, so.
It's also transferred out of the general fund as well.
So it is identified as a revenue source, but it's also a CIP and transfer out.
Yeah.
And I believe that's correct.
Yes.
But I don't think that that's wrong.
Well, I'm just saying that if you have added the $10,000 for the total being $78,000, then the revenue source should still be $78,000, $10,000 of which is CIP, but still it's.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, that was.
It's double added and all that.
It's double added. I got it.
Okay.
So that need to be revised to $78,583.
Good catch.
I told that one again.
And then, I think a similar thing happens on page 77, where Police Administration, you've got the total, 288, includes the $25,573. When you add those numbers, it comes to 288. But the revenue source is listed as 314, but I think that should only be 288, and $25,000 of that is earmarked, or, yeah. So it's a similar.
That should be 288, yes.
Yeah, similar little detail. I wasn't able to do that fine-toothed comb on everything, but I suspect there may be one or two others in there.
I think they double added that $25,000 again on there. Yeah, similar change in that.
And I believe that the procedure for this budget is once, if we pass the budget tonight, then there's 30 days to make corrections, and then it's closed.
Yeah.
So little, little things like this can be done for 30 days.
Well, this is not affecting overall on the page 28, the summary, the overall fund schedule, because this is just the, pretty much the typo, the two arrows we're making. So it's not affecting any of other spreadsheets, the summaries.
Jerry. Yes. I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommended action with the following things, that the Finance Department comes back every three months and gives us an update on how that they're doing to get us into even money. And if it's too soon, in three months, then you give us a page that says that this is what I'm working on, and what I'm looking for is the money, not something that might be coming in, but the money that we have in the bank or something that we have tangible.
Okay.
That's what I want. Do I have a second on that?
Can I ask, are you, are you saying the recommended action, both one and two?
Yes.
Can we separate those?
No, I would just go with both of them.
Okay.
I would also prefer to separate them, just for clarity.
Your okay was not a second, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I prefer them to be separated.
Want to remake the motion, and someone on the second?
Nope, the way it is. Okay. Not hearing a second, I guess now I'll entertain a second motion.
I make a motion to approve the first part. Adopt the city's financial and operational policies.
And I'll second the motion with a caveat that the Finance Committee meets more than once quarterly to work to a resolution to getting us out of the deficit, and then a written report from Finance quarterly.
Wasn't the motion only?
Oh, that's right. It was your motion. Sorry. I was seconding with a little addition.
But your, your motion was the financial, the.
Policies.
The policies, not the budget.
Yes, just the policies.
Jerry.
Just the policies.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. But did you motion the first part or the second part? Because I thought you did the first.
She said the first part.
The recommended action is the first part. The adopted proposed financial and operational policies.
And that's what I seconded, but I was trying to add something to.
The second part, which we haven't motioned yet.
So I have a motion and a second, and then do I have further discussion? Yes. I, I don't want the finance persons, the Finance Department, to do it. I want it out in the open so that the whole place knows what we're talking about. And that's why I mentioned what I said, is that every three months, they come back and give us a report to the diocese. Everybody can hear it, the community can hear it, and everything is clear.
I understand.
That's why I said.
The reason that I asked for your motion to be separated out is because I would like a vote on the operational policies, and then I would like a separate vote on the adoption of the budget. Just two simple, clean motions.
With, with the motion of coming back in three months?
That'll be in the next.
That would be addressed on the next portion when we talk.
So we're just voting on the policies at the moment. Motion in a second.
Policies first.
Any other discussion on the policies? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Any else? Okay, back up here now. So the motion is to adopt recommended action one, adopt the proposed city's financial operation policies.
Correct.
All right, open.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. Okay.
On the budget part, I have something, need a minor change, need a change. On the page 20, is a minor change. Public Works Engineer Department's recently, heard good news, is all of our engineers gonna receive professional engineer certification. So if that happens in the next few months, and then we're gonna promote that position from assistant engineer to associate engineer. So in that page 20, actually on the, on the Public Works Engineering, the associate engineer, that's a new created position. So it's not existing in '16, '17, '18, '19, so that need to be zero instead of one. On the, on the Public Works Engineer, the first one, associate.
So those should be all zeros until 19?
Until, until 19, yeah.
Okay.
Because that's a new position.
Gotcha.
That's because of promotion, yeah. That's a minor change.
Did the promotion already take place?
Not yet. Yeah, we're waiting for the final certification to come in, and that will take place.
How was that impacted by our implications of a hiring freeze? Did that?
We talked about a hiring freeze for our police department, our Public Works Director, and, and our Finance Department. And those are all general fund departments. The engineering department is not a general fund department. It's a very small slice.
Yeah, this is another new, a new, new added position, because the, it was promote from assistant engineer to associate engineer, so it's like a swap.
So is, is assistant engineer on there showing for previous years?
That should be showing on the separate lines, it's assistant engineer in there. From, that was the 1111 there. And then the associate engineer should be all zero from previous year, and that will be only for the 1920.
I guess I'm just not seeing assistant engineer?
Yeah, we missed that. That's what the correction.
Okay.
We're gonna add that one off.
So we should have had assistant engineer up to a certain point, and then it, then it.
Yeah, up to 1819, and the 1920, assistant engineer gonna be zero, and then associate engineer one, so it's kind of.
And I think this is a contract. Yeah, and so the money's already there.
The money's already there.
And this is a contractual thing where if they meet X, they move into the next category?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good news. We'll qualify it.
Okay.
Yeah. That's only change.
Yes.
All right. So at this point, we are looking at adopting the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 budget as presented. Are you listening to the motion? No, I know. That's why I'm looking to see if I have a motion. Go ahead. Am I looking for a motion here? I, I mentioned my first one. If you, if you would add, I would add that they come back every three months with a report to the council in the council chambers to, in a meeting, to tell us what's going on, to make us solvent. Okay, do I have a second on that?
Can I add, can I suggest in addition to yours, Larry?
Let's hear it.
In addition to the public portion, quarterly, I'd like to see that the Finance Committee is involved in the, having more than one quarterly meeting, not typically finance meeting. Could you meet monthly and bring back some information?
As long as, as we have the, the actual open meeting to see.
I agree with you there.
What's going on.
I just would like to also know, on a monthly basis, some kind of informal brief when we're talking about committee reports, anything that kind of pops out, that you foresee something coming up that could impact your budget, that sort of thing.
So when we have, and just, just a suggestion, so when we have our committee meetings, those have to be noticed in minute, and they're, it's fairly amount of staff time involved.
Okay.
And what, and all it's really gonna be on a monthly basis is because a lot of the money we receive is quarterly or every six months. So not much happens on a monthly basis. It's, it's not much information. Quarterly is even pushing it, actually. It's, you're gonna get information, but not really, Mary, like, like your next quarterly meeting, you're not gonna get much information. Your mid-year, you're gonna get some information.
I think we're maybe, and I don't mean to speak for you, but I think the concern is that, it's like when we do the mid-year, pretty soon it's March when we're having the mid-year, and I think that's where your concern is.
And it doesn't necessarily find coming in that I'm looking for. I'm like, what is on the horizon that you see? What are some changes that maybe are impacting? Maybe you recently talked to the county, and it looks like we're gonna get more from the landfill than we thought. Those types of things are information that we don't want to have to wait three months to hear about.
And maybe that's something I can just give a report in my city manager's report once a month, and sort of update.
All right, Larry's first. I don't want money coming in. I want money in the bank. I want to know that in three months, that we have X number of dollars in the bank. I don't want to go on hearsay, or maybe it'll come in, or whatever. I want to know money. Because that's the only way we're gonna get out of this debt, is money in the bank. That's my, that's my shot on it.
And I just would like to say that I think that the reason this is a concern, and I don't mean to be putting words in anyone's mouths, but I think the reason this is a concern is because six months ago, we all heard very rosy things about where we were financially. When I was running, I was told things are really good with the city. We're, you know, we've lost a little in sales tax, but it's actually not as bad as we thought. Everything's good. And then all of a sudden, we're at budget time, and it's like everyone's running around with their hair on fire. So I don't think anybody wants six months down the road to say, we said yes to this budget, and now we're in even worse shape than we thought we were gonna be in. So having a quarterly checkup, even if there's not a whole lot of information to present, makes us feel like we've done our due diligence to keep an eye on the ball.
Absolutely.
Yes. And maybe if there's something big that comes up on a month, like at a council meeting, and I can say, a bill can't, you know, we had unexpected this, that, or the other happen in between those quarterly meetings, maybe that would help.
I think I agree with Stephanie's point that we probably don't need a separate Finance Committee meeting to do that checking up, that Larry's desire, and actually everybody's, is that that comes up at our regular meetings so that all of us and the public are kept up to, in the loop on all, anything that impacts both the revenues and the expenses that isn't expected in this budget, or that, you know, that's better than the budget, would be really fine. So I just think the Finance Committee doesn't have that big role to play.
I think we also should have some kind of contingency in there. We always have a budget, and then sometimes we go beyond even what we had budgeted, and we should have some kind of plan in place. Right now, we're talking about a 33% reserve. What if we have an emergency, and it looks like we're gonna drop below, say the number's 30%? What, what is going, how is this council going to react to ensure that we take some kind of measure to get that back up?
So we, so what our finance policy actually says is that we strive for 35% reserve, which is an incredibly conservative number, by the way. And it says in that policy that in case that happens, that we take five years to try to get it back there. And, and that is what reserves are for, to give you some cushioning so that you can think of ways to make that hole again. That is not something that happens in two months or three months. It happens over time. In this budget, in this staff report, we actually presented you with a, with an action plan of all these things that we could do, and we want it, but there, it takes time to do them, but we are gonna be working on those things. It is, finance moves very slowly, and I think our Finance Director can talk about that in more detail. I have every, my guess is our next audit is also gonna say that we're actually doing fine financially. It is, it is all relative. This is basically our warning shot, that, oh, things, we need to start, we need to do something, and we're gonna do something. I think that June's projected plan is that by next year, that's gonna go to 34, and then back to 35, and then she's on a two-year plan to get us back to 35%.
But we need to know that, as a, as a council, we need to know every up and down. I mean, that's, that's the thing, and I'm with Greta, that, you know, I was told that everything was pretty good also, and then when we come up to budget thing, it's, it's not that. And I want to know whether we're going up or down, or, you know, if you just have a piece of paper saying, everything's the same, nothing has changed, then that's one thing. And I can save that piece of paper, and then when six months comes up, and it says, the same piece of paper says, gee, this is it, we haven't changed, then I'm gonna be concerned. Because you've had two, you've had six months to do it. And I'm not saying anything against your bookkeeping or anything else. I'm just saying that that's the way the finances. I mean, I can't go to Safeway and say, I'll be back in six months to pay for my milk and bread and whatever. Or, or it's coming on a ship, but it's not in yet. I've gotta have the check in my pocket or the money in my pocket. And that's when I'm after.
What about every three months, I give a updates on, like, what is cash balance at the 211, and then how much we spending in three months by each category compared to the budget, and how much received as revenue by compared to the budget? And we have dollar amount at the bottoms is by, like, March, it'll be, maybe September 30th, this is how much we have in the bank. It's hard to say, it's gonna be 33% reserve or 35% because we were in the middle of the year, but I can give you money in, money out. This is beginning, this money in, this money out, and this is ending for, by end of the three months, and then that's compared to budget, how much expenditures percentage-wise, revenue percentage-wise weigh on the target in that case. So just report like that.
And is that complicated by the fact that we give sort of large chunks of money only like every six months?
Yeah, it does, it does, because some revenue come in monthly, a lot of revenues quarterly, and then like the, there's some revenue comes, come like semi-monthly, semi-annually, and then success agency just, you know, come like twice a year. It's odd time. One is in September, January, and May, so it's kind of odd years. But, so, but however, we could explain that if it's not reaching the target, on the revenue target, what we think of, we can say, because the sales tax revenue always like two months, three months behind, and we're telling you, this is just one month's worth of, even if it's a three-month report, it's only one month's worth of revenue, because that's the way that is, some stuff like that. So explain what's going on. Does that satisfy, satisfy the council for quarterly reporting?
Yes, and then at six months, we're gonna need to know that it's actually happening.
By six months, yes, we're gonna do.
The mid-year.
The mid-year. That's mid-year, yes.
And at that point, you'd have a better idea.
Right.
So.
Yeah. And also on the expenditure side, you can see if we're on the target or not, if we're exceeding our budget, or, because we cut pretty thin this year, and that's my main worry, is we not gonna, we're not exceeding our expenditures budget. That's my concern. So this way, we all can monitor each other's, where we at, even if it's on expenditure side. Does that satisfy the council for quarterly reporting?
Yeah, will be.
So, yeah, so I'm hearing that you're gonna, on a quarterly basis, and I'm assuming quarterly will be after the quarter's over, so you have.
Right.
Three months worth of data.
That's they'll come in the week after the monthly.
Yeah, sometime in the, in the month following the first quarter.
Right.
So like the mid-year, obviously, is gonna be in December, it's gonna be.
In January or February.
Yeah, January or the beginning of February. And that, I expect that we will be able to see on the expense side, that in the first quarter, we shouldn't be spending more than about 25% of the anticipated budgeted amounts. On the revenue side, there's gonna be delays, so we'll know that, but it won't show, you know, it won't, it won't be as smooth. It'll be in chunks. But I think that's helpful for us.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody, so we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second, yes.
That was, you second? Okay. All right. Any further discussion here? Anybody from out there want to speak on this? All right. I just want to add a couple things. One is, thank you, June, for listening to us. I appreciate that, and I guess thank you to my fellow council here. I, nobody likes kind of, I guess, hunkering down and pinching down, and it may sound like we're micromanaging, but in the end, it's a matter that the community looks at us as to how we're watching the money, and we all get stalked in town and asked, what's this, or what's that? I mean, if we could just keep the press out of here, we could probably not have to answer those questions, but that's a good thing, that the press is here, because it keeps us honest and everything out there. And also, I want to know, we all received a letter from the Police Officers Association, and I want to acknowledge that we did get the letter, but I want you to know, it's not something we take lightly. It's something that, if your car's screeching, that the brakes need to be changed, you, maybe you don't stomp on the brakes and do it right then and there, but you lay off a little bit on the pedal, and you start looking at when you need to change those brakes exactly, and that's kind of what we're doing here, is, you know, we're not being draconian all at once, but we're taking steps to make sure that the city is financially solvent. So that's my editorial. So. Motion. I want to thank you also. Very nice job.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you.
All right. Kathy?
Councilmember Co.
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Reluctantly.
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. So now, right to appeal, persons who have dissatisfied decisions, city council may have the right to a review of that decision. By court, the city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged.
Were we gonna do consent calendar?
Oh, sorry, I totally missed that. Sorry. Consent calendar. I was looking up there. I would like to pull B.
Well, A isn't really an item, so.
No, I just gave you an update.
It's information that we.
All right, so I guess we'll pull B and discuss it. Sorry about that. So resolution approving the, this is the county sheriff's office for animal control.
And I am going to let our deputy city, our deputy city manager talk on this item?
This is a contract that we do annually with the sheriff's department to do animal shelter, animal control in our town, so if the dog's been, gets loose, something like that, they do, we call them, they pick up between the hours of 8:00 and 4:30. I think it's Monday through Friday. And anything prior to that, I believe the police department picks up, it gets taken to Public Works, and then we call from there when they're back in service.
And that, and that contract has not risen in price for?
Years.
Years and years.
It's been $22,000 for years.
My reason for pulling this is that I walk early in the morning, and it's not 8:00 in the morning, it's 5:30 or 6:00 in the morning, and people just open their doors, kick their dogs out, let them do whatever they're gonna do, and then bring them back. And you have to run or carry mace or a bat at 5:30 or 6:00 in the morning to walk in my neighborhood. And I think that one day or two days out of this year's contract, that they can, they can get up earlier and patrol my neighborhood, or the city's neighborhoods, at 5:30 in the morning. And that's why I'm voting no on this, because until they.
And that's why I'm voting no on this, because until they do that, which they've never done that, and I brought this up for ten years, I'm not voting yes on it.
Would anybody else like to speak on this?
I'm glad the contract's not going up.
I'll just add that I, I hear Larry, when I was sitting on that side, I listened to Larry and I'll tell you, plenty of times I came and picked up a dog. We actually had a bunch of catch pulls made so that if we had to catch dogs, we would address that in the off-hours and not that it was something I wanted to do, but the big concern was the bite reports and all the follow-up that happens afterwards that would tie up the officers if we didn't have this contract. And so, for that reason, I will support this and I'm happy, as Prina says, it hasn't gone up. I'm still waiting on our shelter contract, but apparently they haven't, that's a separate animal, that's the one I probably will take issue with at that point, but, so, at this point, unless there's anybody else here, I'll see if anybody from the public would like to speak. Here and then, I bring it back up here. Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Further discussion? Kathy?
Counselor McCallum?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
No.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. All right. I apologize for jumping the gun on the consent calendar. Again, it's our informational inspection activity reports were presented to us and I already read the right to appeal.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Have we had any movement on a new building inspector or code enforcement officer?
Yes, we have actually made an offer. That offer is out there and so we can't talk about it yet, but we hope that that offer will be accepted and we will have a building inspector soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, I was thinking that, but I, all right. City manager reports. Is there any successor agency stuff?
I have a, a couple of things. Walk and Bike Mendocino has donated a bike repair station to the city of Willets, which Public Works is going to install across from City Hall. It's pretty neat, it's going to be right there near the bus stop and it will allow people to hang up their bikes and, and work on them. And they're painting it green to match Willets. They, we are coming to you next, next month, we're going to be coming up with a resolution to start an undergrounding district with PG&E. The reason we are doing that, even though we have very little money in our undergrounding account, is because there is another city that is seeking to do an undergrounding project and cities that do not already have a district formed will have money taken away from them and to prevent that, we are starting one. This district will be just somewhat of a placeholder because we don't have very much money, it can be changed, the location can be changed, it is really just going to be a placeholder. The initial site we are looking at is around the park across from City Hall because the trees are interfering with the lines right there, but again, it is just a placeholder and, and you'll, you'll see that next month.
I'm after there.
We had this undergrounding thing going on in nineteen-eighties. What happened to that money?
I have, I can, I can find out, I am not aware of that, I know.
Because we were able to, until they did the Rimco thing, we had enough money to go around the park so that we didn't have to trim the trees and I know the mayor personally that was in on that and she says that you guys are wrong. It was an undergrounding back in the eighties. And if you want to talk to her, I'll call her up and you can talk to her tomorrow because there was an undergrounding and PG&E had the money at that time.
Who is that?
Who is that? Virginia Stransky is the one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the one.
So, what's nice, what's nice about this is when we do the resolution and present a map and a resolution to PG&E, they send somebody out and they tell us how much money is in the account, they tell us if our district is okay and they also price out what it would cost to do the undergrounding in the park and I guess the same, and that will be good to have that information.
But I want to know what happened to the money from the eighties to the two thousand nineteen?
Apparently PG&E has a fund.
Yeah, they do.
Do you know about that?
I would like to know.
Yeah, we would all, we would all be.
Peter Kayton was the guy that was the head of PG&E at that particular time.
Did she save any documentation there?
What?
Does she have any documentation from that time?
I don't, no, I'm sure that she's thrown away all of her stuff, but her word, her word is still good, I mean.
I'd be curious to know how much is in the fund because I think two years ago, I heard it was like eight hundred thousand dollars, so now you're saying it's very little.
Well, that's what they told me, but I have not seen it, but they, this is what the PG&E person tells me.
Okay.
So this is what I'm down to.
You talked about the Rule Twenty-One money and the.
The Rule Twenty-A money.
To undermat utility?
Yes.
Yeah, that one is, for our understanding, is matching money and the city had to come with some portion of the money and then they were matching, use that, the funds to match, you had to, like a fifty-fifty percent or something like that, is that?
I'd like to come back with actually information that's documented, because I, I am not speaking from a, from a position of knowing what this fund, all I know is, we need to start a district to save, to make sure our money's safe.
A couple of years ago, Tom Mann was heavily trying to get the utilities underlined on, was it Van Lane, the little lane that runs to the Willets Community Center or the theater?
Right.
And at that time, when Adrian Moore was city manager, we had heard a big number of money that was available for undergrounding and so that project was discussed and City Park was discussed.
Yeah.
So it'd be really great to get clear numbers and a clear idea of how that money is accessed.
So next month, you're going to get that report?
Thank you.
You're going to get the report, although the criteria, doesn't sound like Van Lane would meet the criteria because it has to be an arterial or a.
Collector.
Or a collector street or a scenic route.
I think that the discussion at that time was that it was, they were trying to make it safer for the fire trucks, because right now with those overhead lines, it was creating some kind of difficulty.
But that, again, it can be anywhere, right now, we just have to create it, we have a deadline and the deadline is just create something, we can change it anytime and that can go through a public process of where we want the undergrounding to be. We just, I just want to pass the resolution and the map to make sure our money doesn't get taken by other agencies and that is a fair amount of progress.
I'm just going to add, if, if there is a match required and we are able to get, say, a grant, would that qualify? So that can be part of your finding, findings?
I think the step one is just create the district.
Yeah, sure.
I want to get the district created, I want to protect the funds we have.
And.
Because they're, they're threatening to take them and I, and I don't want that to happen.
And apparently at Linga Cities, when, apparently this was a topic of conversation because there were some cities in our area that have lost their funds already.
Right.
And so, and there's some that are actually doing undergrounding, so there was kind of this talk of, sorry, we took your money, but we're ready to go.
Yeah, I don't want that to happen to us, I'm just kidding.
If there's a way to save our money, I would love to keep it.
Yeah, we have a deadline and if we do it next month, we'll be in, within the deadline and then we can be more creative about what we want to do.
So, PG&E can just take the money?
Yes. If you don't, if you don't create a district, they can, if another district doesn't have enough money for their project, they can take another district's money. And they had proposed to take point six eight percentage points of our money, which isn't, doesn't sound like very much and that we shouldn't be that concerned, however, as other, as other cities create districts, that point six eight percent will go up. And so I just want to make us protection, I want a shield. That's where that's going to happen, so we're going to work on that, to put that together. And I just want to give you a heads up.
All right.
Another thing, the Fourth of July is coming up, I have heard some pops and booms out there and I wanted to remind the public that fireworks are illegal, do not do it, this is, this is a fire-prone area, please, if you hear anyone doing fireworks, call the non-emergency number, we will go find out, find them and make that stop. And it's just so important, I was really upset last weekend when I heard so many fireworks out and about. Planned outages, we did put some new things on our website regarding planned outages and planning for that. People have asked whether, and also put on the webs, on our website, that we will have water and sewer services during a planned outage, outage event. And we are in the process of gearing up the various facilities for generators, it turns out, it's not as easy as just plugging a generator, you actually have to have the right connections and we're hiring electricians to do all that good stuff and we're trying to do that as quickly as possible so that we will be prepared with, for generators, but right now, we do have at least workarounds to make sure that our water and sewer are taken care of and our police station is, is, always has a generator and that's provided by the county.
Is there any possibility that we will have enough generator power to have any kind of a cooling station for the public during outages?
It's a great, it's a great question, the answer is no, unfortunately, we don't have enough capacity for that and I started to worry about, and it would be a problem because we're trying to keep City Hall open so we can work and I'm thinking if it's ninety-five degrees, that's going to be really hard for city workers to, so maybe we can get like a little portable air conditioner that are, that can handle the power, but it's going to be hard.
Yeah.
But not enough, that can be, although we're in a cement building that seems very cold in cold weather, it actually gets very hot in hot weather and I think the senior center may be doing some work on cooling because they're working on that.
And the disaster planning workshop for people with disabilities and so, this, the issue came up in our community, what would be the plan if people can't come here for a cooling station? Let's say they are on a machine or medical needs, is, does the hospital have a plan in place where they'll be able to offer some kind of services for those people who are at home with, with systems that need to be plugged in to support their medical needs?
There's a program for oxygen and, and that program, Chris Wilks had taught, had spoken about before in, before this council and they have like extra bottles for emergencies and there is a plan by the hospital. In terms of cooling, no.
Well, there is, it was more, cooling is important, but a lot of people have the systems where they need electricity to keep the machine running.
Well, the backup for a lot of those is, my dad was on one of those.
Yes.
And what they do is, as part of your service, you usually get a tank or tanks. So one service, when you switch services, one, bottom one, a huge tank with a long hose and, and the issue is then you'd have to get ahold of the company and say, hey, look, we're on the oxygen now and you have to come replace it and another company, the other company sent them multiple bottles.
Public, but public health area when, in the meeting, they were talking about people who are on things other than oxygen and I guess there's quite a number of people that are on other type of medical devices that require electricity and the question came up is, what is each city doing? Will the city themselves have a plan to support those people or are we working with our hospital? Will our hospital have some capacity to designate a portion of the hospital that will be on a generator where people can come in from the outside?
Yeah. The city's never, I, I am not aware of cities doing that. I would imagine a larger city that provides emergency services, because a lot of cities do, we do not, we do not have medical services and so that's sort of, we don't have the capacity for that as a small city.
What about in future conversations with the hospital or planning, maybe bringing this suggestion up and seeing what the hospital could do in that type of a situation?
Yeah, you can certainly do that. I think that most folks in those sort of situations are advised often to have a plan.
Amongst the thing, if you watch the, one of the videos that PG&E has put out, that they're, they're basically advising folks who have those sort of needs, that if you're in an affected area, the power could be out for up to five days, that they might start dealing with family or friends and relocating for that period of time to an area, obviously not everybody can do that, but that's part of the whole make a plan thing. And you probably got something in the mail from PG&E that talks about building your plan and your kit and I think that's the, big lesson from this is to get the word out to everybody that some of this you have to take on yourself. I think the era where government does it all for you is probably not feasible, especially for a city our size.
Yeah. I mean, generally, the county is really the one in charge of emergency services in general, they get the, sort of the lion's share, the property tax, the lion's share, the sales tax, the lion's share of everything, they're sort of supposed to do that, we get it, so we do like roads and.
But the funny thing is, at the workshop, the state was there saying, the counties and the cities have to get this planning in place and the county was saying, we're here telling you what we're going to do and what we need to do better, but we're telling you that your cities need to take and the citizens need to take into, you know, and in-home health support services, many of these people are low income.
Yeah.
So those of us who can put planning in place need to.
I mean, we don't have a public health department, I mean, there are cities with public health affairs, we don't have that and we don't get funding for that. That funding is, is, is at the county level and depends on, on what your city does, it's depending on where those dollars go and we don't get any dollars for any of that stuff. So, it is sort of what it is, we're, we're a pretty basic service city, which is.
Just at the next disaster planning meeting in the community?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just something if you could.
Absolutely.
Throw it out there.
Absolutely, and it, I'm going to not talk about the Great Race right now because I'm going to let Kathy talk about that because she really was the star of that show. I also wanted to let folks know, I was at a, with Vice Mayor Stransky, I was at a town hall meeting in Ucaya last Saturday with Senator Mike McGuire to talk about the Great Redwood Trail. I gave a little presentation on our portion of the trail, it was a standing room only crowd, it was, it was really a nice, nice turnout from people and talking about, you know, that we talk a lot about Wilts for the Great Redwood Trail because we are dead center of this Great Redwood Trail and it's an incredible economic opportunity. We are, we split the trail between a suburban trail to a wilderness trail and, and Senator McGuire talked about outdoor recreation is the largest sector of California's economy, one of the largest sectors, it is a ninety-two billion dollar industry and it is the fastest growing economic sector in the, in the, in the state. It represents thirty billion dollars in wages is outdoor recreation and so it's something that we are very well positioned for and we are just really excited and got to talk about our, our little trail and noted that it has not yet been named and we've just been calling it the rail, the trail, so maybe folks here would like to think about how we think of, how we name our little one point six miles of trail, we could have a naming contest, you guys, that's something that maybe council would like to think about how we name that, that could be a really fun thing to do. So, I mean, things were thrown out like the skunk trail, the, all kinds of things, anyway, it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity, we're going to start drawing down funds, I believe, in August to start the environmental work, the environmental portion of this, which should take approximately a year and a half and, but it is, is, we're going to roll forward on that, it's a very exciting project for the city. And that's all I have for now, other than, oh, and just the heat, although today wasn't hot, it's hot outside, keep your dogs and your kids out of the car and as you can see from our Wilts website, thank you very much. Keep them out of the back of the pickup trucks too.
Even when it's not hot.
Even when it's not hot.
Because the sun shining on a car, even in cool weather is, it gets hot.
That's all I have.
So, department recommendation, you almost start with Kathy since she has a lot of good questions.
Well, I can't say enough about yesterday. My biggest fear was that nobody would show up. Happened during two nights in a row. We didn't have to worry about that, it turned out really well. Great Race participants were thrilled with our community, left feedback last night on Facebook, their website, they posted how great it was to come to our little park and have lunch and that they were pleased with the turnout since it was midweek and it's never easy during the week to get people to come, so they were really thrilled with that. I feel bad that, yeah, was a big comment about our bathrooms at the park, that with all the places that they have stopped, we had the best bathrooms. I'm like, yay!
Have we ever heard that before?
Yeah.
I know. I kind of was like, really? So that was kind of interesting, we got a big chuckle about that yesterday after I was about to work, it was like, okay. But, yeah, I couldn't be more pleased with the community, we had a lot of surrounding car clubs from out of the area here, which was nice to see that they were lined up on Commercial Street in front of the museum and the library, that was really cool. And everybody just seemed to have a great time, our vendors did really good, some of them ran out of food within the first few hours, that's a good thing, that means, that means people ate and they did go uptown, I heard, and eat, so that was good. The hospital, lots and lots of kudos to the hospital for supplying the food, we got lots of comments about that because it was a.
for supplying the food. Uh, we got lots of comments about that because it was a, um, nutrition mill and it wasn't, you know, fast food, that kind of thing. And so it was great. I mean, I just, I can't thank everybody enough. Super ate. I mean, I could go on and on and on. All my vendors were wonderful. All our sponsors were wonderful. I appreciate you all coming so much and taking the time out of your day to talk with everybody and just mingle. And your little gifts that you got is what all our participants got. We sent everybody home with something yesterday. And we got lots of feedback on that, that most cities didn't do that. So they were really touched with that. So I just want to thank everybody. We had a great time. Turned out great. Once in a lifetime, you know?
Well, let's hope not.
I think you deserve a round of applause.
Yeah.
I enjoyed it. A little stressed, but you know, it's okay.
It didn't show.
Oh, well, thanks.
Do you have more report?
That's all I have for tonight.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are we doing anything for Fourth of July parade?
Oh, yes, thank you. We just talked, I had to get through one event. Now we'll move on. Next Thursday, uh, 10:45 here in the parking lot. And you guys are actually going to be in the new sewer plant truck that we just got. Um, I know that sounded really bad. It was the one that was wrecked last year and they have replaced it. And they would like to show it off. So they are going to bring up their truck. It's, we've had it maybe a month. So 10:45 right here in the parking lot. And you guys will be as close to the beginning as I can get you.
Thank you.
What do you do if you're in another float?
Oh, no, you can't. Are you at the end or are you at the beginning?
I don't know.
You don't know yet?
Our request to be in.
Let's, uh, let's talk.
Okay.
And we'll figure out what we can work out to get you from point A to point B.
What floor are you in?
Beer, books, and bikes.
Yes.
It's going to be a celebration of Northspur Brewing Company, which is coming soon.
Oh, nice.
The book juggler, which is still here, and the joy of riding bikes in our lovely town.
Nice. And what float are you in?
Uh, the MTA trolley.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully you can get Greta, you know, move towards the end so that she can be.
Yes, exactly.
We do have some seniors who probably would like to be senior rather than ladies.
Yeah, I'm not sure where, um, Kira, Kira does that. So I'm not sure where she's going to put you. So I will check with her and you and I will talk on the beginning of the week and we'll see what we can find out. So, um, then Jerry unfortunately will not be here.
Oh.
He's going to be.
Going to a wedding, so.
What about, uh, decorations? What are we doing to, to decorate our vehicle?
Um, what would you like to do? I mean, we've got the city signs that we're going to put on the side.
Uh, I just think that it should be festive.
Okay.
Do you want us to, uh, well, I don't think any, there's any reason why council can't bring some decorations and liven up our, our sewer truck.
That would be wonderful. Tell you what, we'll point Soprana to take care of that.
Fine.
Unfortunately, I will be at the judging booth to judge the parade.
I'll tell you what, I'll bring some.
So, so how about if we try to park the truck there very early in the morning on Thursday?
It'll be here in the parking lot.
It'll be here in the parking lot and.
I can whip it together in 30 minutes.
And then we can cavat it and, and then that's sort of the jumping off point for the, and I'm going to be driving you all, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up, Madge. We just talked about it this morning and I still have Great Race on the brain.
I know. How, how could you start thinking about that?
Then once we get done with this, we're going to move on to airport news, which date, which is in April, or in August. Yeah, I don't know where I had. So that sounds great. So we'll have it, I'll have, Pete's going to bring it up and I'll have him bring it up in the morning. And then you guys can make sure you get the keys and.
Yeah.
Western wear.
In western.
Oh, yeah.
Do we get flags?
Jim, do you have anything?
No.
Rico?
Hello.
June anymore?
Dusty?
You always have something, buddy. I know you do.
Good evening, Americans, all. It's council members. Dusty Dooley, your community director. Really two floats? I, I didn't get invited to be in any yet.
You can be in our float.
Could I?
Do you have a bike?
No.
Do you want to hold, do you want to hold the giant puppet? We need three people to walk this giant puppet.
I don't feel like I have that attitude either. Well, something with a little less weight on it, but let's talk later.
It's a part of the beer party.
This is the closest I've ever been to being invited to be on a float. Uh, I prop two daughters though, and I don't know if I could go without them. So it might be three's a crowd on that one. Um, just, uh, just to let you know some of the things that are going to stay busy. Happy to say that we are very busy. Um, you have the building permit activity report. So we've had a healthy amount of, of activity, uh, last month and continuing on this month. Um, and, uh, yes, I am very anxious to get Christopher Morgan's replacement. And you did get a quick update on that. And so hopefully we'll have a, a final update for you at the next meeting there. Um, some of the, the big things that we're working on is, uh, of course, the housing element update, the safety element update, the cannabis ordinance update, uh, the building permit fee study. Um, and then we've also signed contracts with the, the two grants that we were awarded, both the urban forestry management grant and the skunk trail grant. I'm just going to try to make sure the trail gets built and everybody else can try to figure out what we call it. Um, so, uh, we look forward to working on both of those, uh, two, uh, grant funded projects later this year. Um, then, um, the next two, um, grants that we're looking at are, are the SB2 planning funds as well as the park grant that we've spoken of in the past. And so we're still moving forward with, uh, applications for, for both of those. And we'll keep the, the council apprised, um, before we take any further actions on those. Um, beyond that, we also are processing a major subdivision, a minor subdivision, a general plan amendment rezone, and a general plan amendment rezone, and minor subdivision. These are projects that have come in in just the last couple of months to go along with the ones that we got before that. So all that just, just to tell you that, um, don't worry about the community development department. We have plenty to do and, and we're getting it done. So, um, any questions? Yeah?
I promised I would bug you.
Okay.
Vacancy abatement ordinance.
Yeah.
We need revenue, right?
Well, you're, um, with, the ordinance is, is done. So it's just a matter of getting the registration program off the ground. Um, but I think the ones that the council was talking about was something about like $50 or $100. Um, so as far as revenue goes, um.
Well, not the, not the registration fee so much as the penalties for those negligent property owners that we all can name but won't.
Right. Um, so we might want to take a, a revisit of that ordinance and put some more teeth into it so that, that, um, we maybe had the tool to, to go after some, some property owners that are being highly negligent of, of their properties and proven to be a big, big community cost to us.
Madge. I agree with that comment. And the other part is, especially if you are now processing some major and minor subdivisions, um, is there any way to have a faster action on the development impact fees? Because these folks are going to like come under their, under the, whatever, under the timeline and not going to pay those impact fees. And we're letting them, potentially are losing that kind of revenue. Is there any way to have a interim revenue?
Well, there are two types of fees. I'm going to have the impact fees and we have the, the regular planning fees, planning and building fees, which we're trying to bring in next month to raise those to a, a level that even partially pays for our work on those.
Yeah.
Uh, that's coming next month. For the development impact fees, um, actually, we've reached out and got a quote from a company, um, to do that because that's sort of a, more of a process through development fees. Um, we haven't, the, the quote we got was about $25,000 to develop those fees.
Wow.
And, um, and I could bring that to you if you like. I'm not sure that we have the capacity right now to oversee that. And I'm looking at you, Dusty. I, I don't know how, we've talked about it a couple of times and we're just, so much on our plates right now. We haven't gone far, but we do have a quote from a company.
Yeah. Um, let's, let's take a look, uh, closer at that proposal and then maybe see what we think maybe staff could potentially take on in-house or at least have some sort of limited help from the consultant side of it. Um, a lot of times those impact fees are, um, applied at the development stage, not necessarily the subdivision stage. Um, so even though we're talking about these, these plans for the subdivisions part, it might be that we're, and there's a lot of other talk of development coming down the pipeline too. So, um, but I agree that it's important to get those impact fees on the books sooner than later because what I'm seeing is, um, Wilts is quickly becoming, um, a new spot for increased development.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, we should expect to get pretty busy over the coming years.
I know. We're, we're trying to have our belts so tight, but sometimes it takes a little investment to create the revenue source that is going to come later. And in a case like this, it's really worth it if we have development, developers sort of knocking on our door and it's kind of hard to up the fees after they've already submitted. But I think it's really worth, um, trying to invest in that so that we get, at least pay for our costs of processing these, these permits, if not the impact fees. But I think both are really important.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're coming back next month.
And we could even have a special meeting if that's necessary.
We have to adjust this.
Larry?
When somebody comes here and wants to do a subdivision, do we make sure that they pay for everything that they need? Or is the city still backing some of the things that, that they use, like water and sewer and this kind of stuff? That, I was told that the, that the city should have imp, uh, contractor's fees or whatever you want to call it, um, to cover all of our expenses. And it hasn't happened that way over the past. Is that what we're working on now?
Well, um, this council actually, actually in, in my time here, um, changed some of the, the planning fees to cost recovery fees. And so for instance, with general plan amendments, rezones, major subdivisions, those are cost recovery projects. Um, the nice thing about that is, one, staff, we all get recouped for our time actually spent on the project. Also, if we're busy developing development impact fees and a bunch of other things and we don't have time to, um, process one of those applications in a timely fashion, we actually have the ability to put that project out to a consultant and have them process the application at the expense of the applicant. With these, uh, applications that I mentioned today, staff is processing those. And so we have full cost recovery on those, with the exception of a minor subdivision. Minor subdivision would be four or fewer parcels and we currently charge $1,000, which I think, um, uh, less than half of that goes to the community development department. And so in those cases, once we spend about five hours on the project, uh, at that point, we're just eating it. Um, so those projects can take somewhere between 30 to 50 hours for a minor subdivision and we're maybe getting paid for about four hours of that. Um, but at least with the, with the bigger projects, the projects that tend to take 50 to 100 hours, we do have cost recovery set up for those council members.
And what about the, the price for somebody that is coming in for a minor subdivision, uh, covering the fees of running the water to them? Or do they run their own water from the main or, and the sewer?
No, we, um, but we do collect, um, uh, fees for established of those new water connections. Um, but then from the street typically to their house or wherever they're running it to, they could either pay us to do it or they could pay a, a contractor to do that part. But we do get reimbursed for, for our work related to water and sewer.
Okay. So it doesn't cost the city anything to run from the middle of the street back to where the last house is and then everybody tie into it?
No, on, on, typically the development's going to pay that cost.
Because in other places, like I have mentioned to Stephanie several times, people pay a lot of money for those kind of things in different places. And I know that Wilts is kind of behind the gate and we got to get up to the 19, 2019 on those.
Yeah, this, this council's made some, uh, what I think are some positive decisions for the city in that regard over the last few years.
Thank you. Dusty, I, I had a brief conversation with, uh, Jim Robbins about, uh, grants and he's such a nice guy. He's like, if you want me, I go, no, you work for Dusty. You don't work for me. I, I was, my email back to him, I said, uh, apparently he said there may be funding out there. Cause I mentioned from my League of Cities, uh, uh, meeting, they mentioned some sort of funding for generators. And, and, and I know that we've got plans in place and I know you got other things to do, but if there is a way, I don't know if the rest of the council feels that way, if there's a way that you guys, um, can figure out whether it's cheaper to go after that or rent generators in the future for what we need long-term or whatever. I, I leave that up to you guys, but I wanted to.
Thank you. Writing grants is sort of a long-term thing.
Yeah.
We certainly, we certainly look for every opportunity that we can.
Mayor Lutzirification, were you able to share the potential grant opportunities for your generators with?
What I got told, yeah, what I got told is I, that I didn't, uh, that they were there, but they didn't cite exactly. Then Jim actually said he saw some references according to, I guess he reached out to the League of Cities to specifically see. And he, he sent me a beat email back saying it looks like it's this or that or whatever. And, uh, and I said, well, I said, you work for Dusty. So as far as policy, you know, as far as going after that, that, you know, long-term, that maybe we all at the council decide we, we want the city to look at that. But day to day, that's up to you and Stephanie to decide how to use his time. And I wasn't going to tell him, go do that. So just so you're aware.
Thanks for, um, sharing that information with me.
Yeah, he was, he was very, Johnny on the spot to tell me where it might be. But obviously it's one of those things where you tell somebody, yeah, a place to find golds up in the mountains, but do you want me to go pan it for you? I'm going, nope. That's, you, you've got things for him to do. So I just want to mention that in this day and age now, it seems like if we're moving towards everybody to have a generator or whatever, then I think it's important we harden things. But for now, we, I think we've made adequate plans to take care of city infrastructure. It's just a long-term, if there's money out there and I, I don't want to say it's free money because free money isn't really out there. It seems like we've got to invest some money to get it.
Never free. Thanks. We'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Did you get all the information that you needed for the parks grant coming along? You've mentioned that, uh, I know that application deadline's quickly approaching.
It's coming up in, in August, yeah. Um, and I think we're still fine tuning exactly how, what improvements we should include in that that would, um, allow us to have a better chance of being successful on that grant.
Okay. I've been visiting parks.
We're also funding limitations with space and, um, certain, um, biological things that would prevent us from building in certain areas of our properties. So.
I'm anxious to see what the grant looks like.
Yeah, I know you are. Thank you.
Well, I guess at this point, we are onto our engineering department. Discussion, possible action, approving and updated plans and specifications for the North Maple Street Improvement and Storm Drain Replacement Project and authorizing read advertisement for bids.
Hi, hello everyone. Suzanne Lutzis, the, I'm the assistant engineer for the city. Um, you may recognize this project. I brought this to you a couple of times first, um, to approve the plans and specifications. Um, and for the original advertisement, I think back in November, um, we did eventually advertise it and opened bids in May. Um, we came, I came and asked, um, for your consent to award a contract to granite construction for the work. Um, we started to go under, into the contract process, in which time we found an error in the asphalt quantities that were called out in the project specifications. Um, and this became a bit of a problem when it, we also noticed that it was coupled with very high unit costs from the contractors, um, for the asphalt price. So the asphalt that was listed, the quantity that was listed in the specifications was about half of what it actually should have been. It just was a conversion error, honestly. Um, but the implications of that meant that we would likely, having it, um, structured that way or outlined that way, um, we could spend probably about $30,000 more on asphalt than we really would expect to. Um, and so we had some discussion. I spoke with Stephanie and Jim and Rod Wilburn, our contractor. And so we had some discussion, I spoke with Stephanie and Jim and Rod Wilburn, our contracted engineer, about the issue. Rod did reach out, and I reached out to Granite and talked about the issue. There was some discussion of negotiating the second part or the second, you know, quantity amount that we would need for the asphalt, and the numbers just, quite frankly, weren't panning out. And so ultimately, we decided that it was the, would be the best decision to actually correct the number and re-advertise the project and not complete the contract. So that's where we're at right now. There is another minor change that kind of happened during the discussion, and that's just bringing a manhole back based on an arborist report that we'd got in the meantime. So that's what I have in front of you, and I'm hoping that we can just re-advertise the project. With your permission, we would actually start the project in the middle of August.
So we haven't started this, no part of this has happened, it just?
No.
Basically scratched the old part of what we'd already approved and then re-advertized it with the corrected numbers, is that?
Yeah, everything's been updated, so...
And the difference in cost from what we were before? Trying to find?
Well, this actually, this actually looks a little bit higher than what we've seen I would expect that the bid would come in lower than this, but it's not a guarantee. I was able to update the estimate based on the bids that we received, so I actually just took an average of the three bids, which is higher than the low bid. So this actually looks, the estimate looks higher than it originally was, but it's only for that reason.
Do we know what the original estimate was?
I think it, the low bid was $290, I believe, something like that, but then we would have had a change order that would have added on like another $30,000 in asphalt.
And I'm just going to jump in here just to clarify a little bit. So normally, when you have a problem with your spec and you're sort of faced with two options, and one is to negotiate a change order at the time, the other is to go out to bid. With a correction of this size, it was all of our opinion that we would get a better bid price if we went out to bid again, so that it's sort of back to the drawing board. Also, other agencies, other companies who bid on it would maybe be more competitive, so it's generally, and it's also more fair, because you're supposed to have everybody have the same information when they bid on a project, and so when you sort of mess around after a bid, it's just, I think it's problematic, so this is a good thing to do legally and also probably on a cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah.
Madge first.
Well, my question, I guess, is to Jim, are we not in any legal questionable area with the people that won the bid first? Had we already entered into a contract or not?
No, well, it was awarded, and it was signed, the contract was signed by Granite, contract has not been signed by the city, and I think, I think the city does have the right to pull the contract and not, and not go forward with it. Granite probably is not pleased with that decision, but it also would have been problematic to negotiate independently with Granite and not providing them with information that wasn't provided to the other bidders, and so it's kind of a difficult decision what to make, and it was our, our collective view that pulling the contract and going out to rebid this time with correct quantities is the, is the right thing to do.
So we're not canceling a contract we entered into?
No.
Because we haven't signed it yet, so we're legally in safe turf?
Yeah, you can, my understanding is you can, you can pull the, you can pull the solicitation anytime before a contract is actually executed.
Okay, that's what I was...
Is my understanding?
Thank you.
Sorry, oh, sorry, Sabrina and Larry.
How did that impact the timeline of the work performed? Going out, going out for another bid on the project, did that change the timeline of performing the work by months, months to years?
Yeah, I mean, we would probably be started now, so it's, it's set it back for maybe like six weeks or something like that.
Weeks, so not months, okay. Just curious.
Yes, I think that you were very right to do what you've done, is to go and re-give everybody a shot at it. I think that this makes a cleaner thing of the contract, and I would move to, with the recommendation of the, of the staff to redo it.
All right, Madge, seconds. Any for the discussion? Would anybody from the public like to speak? Hearing un, ready to back up here, Kathy?
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Excuse me, Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, now we're at City Council Committee, Board of A.D. anybody?
Yes. I had a long MTA meeting today, and we went over the budget as well as other things, and when I was appointed to the MTA Board, what, two and a half or so years ago, MTA had just been hacked, their accounting system had been hacked, and when I first got on the Board, I was thinking, "Oh my, what did I get into?" Because the accounting was, there was lots of challenges. Since then, Carla Meyer, who had recently been appointed as the General Manager for MTA, has really had a good, clear vision on where to take MTA and has worked diligently to make sure that our long-term vision for MTA's finances have been good, and so today we were able to approve a healthy budget, and in fact, we allocated, which I thought was very important, we allocated nearly a million dollars we set aside in our capital improvement fund toward the state's 2030 clean energy. By 2030, where the transit authorities are supposed to be only using buses with clean energy, although the state didn't give any funds to entities to try and figure out how to make this happen, so it's up to the entities themselves to ensure that we're setting aside funds in our capital improvement budget. So I thought that, that was a success to celebrate on MTA's behalf, and I was also elected by the fellow directors today to serve as the new Chair for MTA, conditional upon confirmation from the Board of Supervisors on July 9th. And the next meeting for MTA is on July 31st, here in the council chambers in Willets, and so anybody from the community has anything they'd like me to add to the new unmet needs list, please reach out to me. I did add, once again, it was still on the list, but I just brought it to the Board's attention, that we're still looking to add service till late in the... They did a study, and it showed that there were, there weren't enough people interested to support it, but I keep putting it out there, along with, there's quite a list of unmet needs in Willets, so keep pursuing those.
Sabrina, the issue with the bus stop down at the south end, have they resolved that?
Has not been resolved yet. They're working towards a resolution, but we're not there yet. Very close.
Okay.
It looks like it's going to go in the shopping center, and MTA has met with the owner of the shopping center, and those negotiations are going well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Patrick?
Will you let us know when it all happens so that we'll know? Thank you very much.
So I have two boards that look have interesting things happening. The one that I feel is, is very significant is the ENSWA, the Encino Solid Waste Management Authority, met about a week ago, and for the previous two or three meetings, we had been kind of bantering around a proposal by CNS, which is the hauler for UCAIA, to basically privatize the household hazardous waste services that have been ENSWA's main bread and butter service to the community, and CNS had a kind of outline to what it would take for them to take over that, that, which would mean privatizing it. Part of their proposal involved that they would basically serve as the General Manager to the Joint Powers, the ENSWA Board, and that raised some questions for me, is that you don't really have any independent public review. The other thing that they wanted very strongly was to take over either on a really long-term lease or immediately transfer the property on Taylor Drive, which is the recycling center where ENSWA does their business, and we had a negotiating committee that included the city managers of UCAIA, Fort Bragg, and Willets, to meet with CNS to talk about what kind of provisions would be appropriate if we were to do that, would ENSWA still have the ability to get that property back if we wanted to, and what would that involve? So in closed session, we heard the report of that negotiating committee, and we talked also about the General Manager position and the staffing of ENSWA to kind of weigh these two options. So it really, after two or three months of looking like we were going to go with CNS as a privatization, at the end of that, that session, we announced that the whole negotiation with CNS is on the back burner, or on hold, as you would say was the words that were used, and we are, we have an ad hoc committee to work with the ENSWA staff to see if we can handle basically within our own staff to continue to provide this as a public agency. It probably involves the person who's been now designated as the interim General Manager, who was the office manager, is sort of upping her game and getting trainings on how to run an agency. So I am very relieved that we are not rushing into a privatization, which I saw as being potentially really hard to, to back out of, and that didn't really provide a lot of assurances for the public oversight. So that's, that was just a week ago that we made that, that kind of shift in our game plan.
But how does this affect the city of Willets and also running into Cold Creek? I mean, does it make any difference with these people?
The thing that is not going to be provided, and would not have been provided by CNS either, is any staff support from the ENSWA agency to the cities that could really use expert advice on our dealings with our own waste haulers. So neither CNS would not have done that, and probably the changing of our in-house staff are not going to have that kind of expertise either. So it does leave Willets and Fort Bragg in particular to kind of fend for themselves on how to review our contracts with our waste haulers and see whether they're really, yeah, and maybe Stephanie has something?
Yeah, it's a problem. It's definitely a problem. For both Fort Bragg and Willets, you know, the structure, I mean, we actually have very good contracts with solid waste of Willets. Our rates are quite low, probably half of what that, what the county gets, but we get a calculation of new rates every, when certain things occur, and I was not a part of that contract when it was negotiated, I would not know how to evaluate the various changes that they propose, that's why I rely on the expertise of ENSWA, the ENSWA General Manager, who sort of was on our side and sort of looked at things and sort of said yes or no. That sort of leads either, I think there was some talk about ENSWA contracting with somebody that could help us out, which is the right thing to do, I think, and not just forget about us, and I would hate for us to have to go out and hire a consultant to be on-call. Those consultants are expensive, and we didn't have to do that before, it's yet another cost that we're having to absorb, and it's, no, it's a very specialized field. And, yeah, I mean, as you all know, I mean, I was with larger agencies, we always contracted out for the services, and it's, it's only like two firms out there, they charge a lot.
Does it affect the green waste at all going to?
The Cold Creek? Only in that if Cold Creek's contract is through, is with SWO, not directly with the city. So if SWO, Solid Waste of Willets, gets a change coming from Cold Creek Compost, they will then go to us and say, you know, "We need to change any of our rates because of this," and that's, that's again where we could really use the outside help, expertise, but our contract isn't directly with them, so it's really, when SWO finds themselves in a situation where they want to raise our rates, they have to justify it.
But the green waste still is going to Cold Creek, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Along with us, just so you know, in the future, well, in the very far future, the bylaws that the JPA agreement was based in, I think it was adopted in the 1990s, so it is, it doesn't even provide what we have been getting from the General Manager, it's not in there. It was really, at that time, designed to cite transfer stations, and it's really out of date. It doesn't describe what, what ENSWA is actually doing or what they could be doing, with the county having pulled their $90,000 or 90, almost $99,000 out of the equation, should have announced that, too. The county about a month ago said, "They aren't getting the services of the General Manager, so they're not going to keep paying for it." So they're, they are in their budget drawn there $99,000. So we wouldn't be able to hire an expert General Manager now anyway, because we don't have that funding. We don't think it's very likely that we'll get that funding back, so we're going to have to redesign the scope of what ENSWA does to fit within the budget and the staffing that we have. So it is, and the revisions to the JPA will have to come to each of the members, which includes us, to see whether we approve those revised scope of work, basically, but it's the only way I see us continuing to have at least some of those public services. It's a very, it is a very valuable public service that they provide on these hazardous household wastes, so, you know, tires and refrigerants and, I mean, just tons of things, literally tons of things.
And my hope is that, that the votes on that board that are sympathetic to Fort Bragg and Willets will provide for some services to us to make sure that we are made whole, I'm hoping.
Yeah, I just, there is a problem in that UCAIA and the county are probably reluctant to pay for things that are going to benefit just other jurisdictions.
My understanding is, is that UCAIA was, was definitely open to making sure that we would, that Fort Bragg and the city of Willets had some support.
Okay.
They were very supportive of that.
I will, I will continue to fight that.
So continue, yeah, they, we work more and more with the cities of Encino County, we've developed a pretty good bond, and they don't, they don't want to leave us in large.
Oh, good.
I feel very strongly.
And I also feel that our acting general, or interim General Manager, is really stepping up her game, and over time, might be able to at least...
She can learn those skills, I mean, she can absolutely learn those skills.
Yeah, I think, I think we're moving in that direction. So that was, that was ENSWA.
Madge, real quickly, how many people serve on that board?
Five.
So there's five of you, and we already know that two of you, how you feel, so I was just curious. So you've got?
Yeah, there's two county Board of Supervisors.
So two county, one UCAIA, Fort Bragg and Willets, okay. Just curious as to where the weight is.
Yeah, and it really did shift a week ago. From the previous meeting, there was a statement made that there was a consensus building, you know, being, being developed to go with the CNS proposal, so one month later, it was, we're putting that on hold. So it was really a pretty momentous kind of reconsideration was going on. Okay, the other board that I want to report on is the Economic Development Okay, the other board that I want to report on is the Economic Development and Financing Corporation. And there's not as much to say about that. But they are, and I'm just looking at these agenda, and I don't know that it shows up in the agenda, but we did adopt our, our annual budget. And we have a lot of money available to loan. And we authorized to go out to advertise a, I think, 30 to 40 hour a week kind of job to a, the title is something like, I can't remember what the title is. Basically, it's to sell loans. It's to go to the banks, find out who has come into the banks and been declined a loan, go out to the chambers of commerce and find out, you know, who is up and coming and could expand their businesses. And to really aggressively, proactively seek suitable candidates to get EDFC funding. Because we have lots of money going, just sitting in the bank and not collecting any interest and, and not working for the community and building jobs. So that's our mission is to work for the community and build jobs. So they're going to, you know, and our current executive director just has very little time to devote to this, basically a full-time job. So that was, that was a step in the right direction from EDFC. And the other things I wanted to talk about are part of the other stuff here, member reports. No, there's one other thing. EDFC, at EDFC, Shannon Riley, who's assistant city manager at Ukiah, gave us copies of this, and I'll give each of us copies. This is what they're sending out with their utility bills. Ukiah does their own electric, electric city distribution. However, they are subject to the same emergency shutdowns that we are because the transmission lines are still PG&E. So their power comes in from PG&E and then the city distributes it. But because of that, they're letting their customers know what to do in the event of a shutdown. And I thought this was a pretty good public information document, and I wanted to share that with you.
Actually, that brings up something else. I know that most of the traffic lights can last about 48 hours, I think, on battery backup. But I wonder if we did have a, a power outage. I'm thinking more of when, maybe I called a Caltrans just to find out.
That's a great question.
The other one is, there'll be our, our lights here shortly on Main Street that we're going to worry about.
Great question.
So I just figured that maybe you could look into that.
Thank you.
Because this reminded me there about traffic.
I hadn't thought of that one.
I knew we were on battery backup, but you know, normally we can last for a day or two, as long as there's no issue with battery backup kicking in. They've converted all of them to LEDs, and then that's how they're able to last on the battery.
Let's say somebody had her outage, didn't the power, didn't the signals go out also?
Well, they'll either stay, they'll either stay on or they'll default to blinking red.
Oh, okay.
And so if they go out completely, it was because some breaker there didn't work. But all, all of them in town are on battery backup.
And they weren't blinking.
Yeah, so if there's an issue, they all default to blinking red so that they turn into stop signs. But, but for the most part, they, I think all of them have been converted to LEDs, so they'll last longer. But that would be like a couple hours or a day, but after that.
But typically, so again, in other jurisdictions, when a, when a light goes out and it really does go out, police come out and put out signs, and it becomes a four-way stop. And so that's what it turns into. And so the, the question for you is, that's sort of the standard procedure, is make it a four-way stop? Because everybody's lights are out sometimes.
Here, we call out Public Works to do that and, yeah, because they don't carry signs.
But I'm not sure that we want his, yeah, so that's what generally.
But right now, it belongs to Caltrans still.
Right now, it belongs to Caltrans. But if it's ours, that's what a city normally does, is they put out the stop signs.
But I figure that, you know, that's a good question just to ask regarding that, because we'll eventually own the.
Cross the line.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So that's one thing.
Go with tracks into two intersections.
Leggitt, did you have?
Yes, I have, first of all, I talked to the gentleman that is running the Sherwood work on the road, and he said they're right where they need to be and right where they should be. And so it still looks good for November. And Nash is the one that I talked to at the great race. And then MCOG just passed their budget, and that was pretty easy on, well, it wasn't easy, but we did it anyhow for MCOG for next year. Thank you.
You're right. I try to think if last, one of the last meetings, I was going to go up to Blue Lakes to, to League of Cities, which I don't think I reported on. And one of the things they brought up, they had somebody there to give a talk on PERS. And he's actually a consultant that worked for the league, who's now jumping ship, but he gave one of his final things, and he talked about the public employee retirement system and what typically happens with cities who default, et cetera, to go pay. And they talk about, they basically pay 30%. There's some sort of like insurance kind of thing built into it, but you, you would still be responsible for it. They have a formula, they kind of put you in a non-payer category. They try to get cities back into it because it does affect the employees. Because I did read another follow-up article regarding that, that there's some lawsuit pending, it had to do with the community of loyalty that ended up in that mode. So I think you can go to the league's website and get some more information on that subject. But that is some concern. That's one of the reasons why we do what we do up here, is so that we make sure that we're financially solvent, so that we can still keep paying those obligations. But that, that was kind of an eye-opener for me, especially as a retiree. Want to make sure that money's still flowing as a retiree. I, they covered it there, but they also, I think, covered it at, I went to a policy committee meeting in Sacramento. And one of the things that, there was some legislation pending regarding recreational marijuana and having to put so many, allowing so many licenses for that based on, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Dusty, but it had to do with some other formula that we'd be, you know, thank you. And apparently that has been kind of buried in committee at the moment. And so they really, at this point, they warned that it could come back again. But I'm recollecting, it might be Weiner, might be the guy that authored it, or another guy. And I may be wrong on the Weiner aspect of it, but that it could come back again, they warned. But right now, it's kind of dead in committee. But it was all a matter of local control issues. You know, cities, yeah, it's one thing if you voted for it, but if you didn't vote for it, and then all of a sudden to be kind of forced to have to do that. I know that we're kind of in a different, but we've allowed medicinal, and we still have to discuss the other aspect of it, but we, there were some cities that were really adamant, they didn't want any marijuana at all. So that was, that was one thing that was covered, so, and that's all I've got.
Can I ask a question? So this part is called council reports and recommendations. How's the recommendation?
I think we're on 11. We're still on committee agencies.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So on the next one, what are recommendations? What does that mean exactly? Can I ask that?
Matt, give an example, because you usually have something.
Yeah, I actually have an example. There's a current legislation in Takameta to enable counties to enter, to create public banks. And I would like to have us put that on our next agenda. So that's my recommendation, is that we agendize that so we can have an endorsement opportunity if we like that idea. That's a recommendation.
Okay. Anything that we want to bring up, something that we'd like to go on the agenda? Or share with the community, you are a consultant.
Could be announcements, but it could also be something like that for a future agenda because Stephanie wants direction from us as a group.
And so for agenda items, just to clarify, so it's basically two people need to be able to recommend, give me some direction on agenda item. I, we had a council retreat in which we agreed that when we did that, we would have a staff report to actually now analyze the issue, the pros and cons or whatever. So we'd have, they'd have some time to sort of understand what that issue is and give the city manager some time to sort of look into it. So it's not sort of a blind thing on the agenda. So we can give you some information before you vote on it. And that's my, because that's sort of our, our job as staff is to give you a recommendation on sharing things.
I'm not sure what Matt is asking.
And I'm not either, so that's why.
So is this some legislation you heard is kind of moving its way through, and you basically would want us to come out in favor of said legislation?
Correct. And I think it has, in fact, already passed the assembly, and it's already passed Mike McGuire's committee in the Senate, but it goes to another committee in the Senate. And then eventually, it goes through all that, goes to the floor, and it enables counties to, to potentially set up public banking. The group that I got this information from is looking to have a planning group of Sonoma, Mendocino, and Humboldt to consider a tri-county public bank. It'd be way in the future, obviously, because, but you have to get that authorization from the state before you could even consider that.
Is it too soon to agendize something like that?
I guess I just want more information.
It would, it would have to be put on the city manager's schedule to see whether we could work it in. But it is, yeah, I mean, I think it's not too soon. It might be too late. It may have already gone through the state process before we get to it. But I think, I think it's worth us supporting that legislation because I think a public bank enables a lot of, especially what has been underground money to be processed legally. And underground money is an important part of our economy, at least it has been in the past. And, and the fact that, that they can't bank makes it an all-cash kind of a security issue. So public banking's been on the radar for several years. It's just.
But that wouldn't change the federal at all?
No, no.
So it would just be a state of California bank for taking the money for.
I believe what this.
Cash crop or whatever, huh?
There may be a consideration to do a state public bank, but I don't think that's what this legislation, I think this legislation just enables counties who wish to do it, the possibility of doing it, of creating a public bank.
And so it would give them the okay from the state to go ahead and do it, and the state would back it?
The state wouldn't back it financially, no. It would just.
No, but they legally would.
Yeah, they would make, it would make it legal to do it, right now.
I just, I know that, I think I've heard what you're talking about, but I didn't think that there was actually where they called for bills from the league yet. So I don't know if it's something the league wasn't directly supporting or not at the moment, because I'm not sure if, you know, doing the whole legislative thing, whether it's buried in some committee or whether it's either on its way down inside or on its way up.
Well, if there's, you know, if there's a concern that we don't have enough information, and if you don't want to get more information, then let it lie. But if we want more information and consider it, then I'd like it agendized. So that's my recommendation.
I'm just thinking about our visions, our goal, and being mindful of not getting sidetracked. So I'd say probably for right now, I'd like to, to hold off. And not that we shouldn't consider it in the future, maybe when there's a little bit more information so that we can give more direction on it. Yeah, but at this time, I don't, I just don't want to see city staff when we already have them stretched, sending them out. Not that it's not a good idea.
No, and I kind of think if the league had basically said, hey, we need letters, you know, Sarah had said, hey, we need letters for this, it's, it's up for a vote, then I could see saying, gee, let's go that route. But at this point, I.
Santa Rosa, by the way, has been the most out in front with this, and they, they have looked at the possibility of doing it in Santa Rosa. But a bigger coalition of groups would be very, that's what they're looking for. So, I mean, I don't think.
Privately, if you get some more information, I slide my way, because at this point, I gotta do a little research now.
Okay.
All right.
No problem.
Okay, so.
So I guess I have a recommendation. I think most of us got an email this week from one of those groups that offers to look at your utility bills, to make sense of them. And this was something we had discussed a few months back, and we haven't heard anything about it. So I wondered if we could discuss that again and see where we stand and if any progress has been made on that.
So we were going to come back actually in fall because we're in, the engineering department is in project mode. So they are, they do not have the time to work. We said we would come back with more information in the fall, just because they are absolutely to capacity. You, they just don't have any more hours to spend on this. And I, yeah, they, they have pled for help or for mercy. So this is basically prime season for building. And we do want to get to it. It's just, it's a matter of capacity. But we'll get to it as soon as we can. We, there are firms out there doing that. There's, there's, actually, there's, there's, I forwarded another name of someone to Suzanne, who actually is someone who, you know, we knew in the community and now works for PG&E. Or, no, he works, it's Jason Freck from, yeah, you know, you know him. He worked with the.
I know his name.
With the solar company here in town.
Grid Alternatives.
With Grid Alternatives. And I wanted to get him here, because he does the free consultations as well. And I've talked to him, and I want to get him in as soon as possible. He does need some, a little bit of assistance from, from engineering folks to kind of hold his head a little bit through the process, but I do want to get him in here as soon as possible.
We're going to try and get him in in July.
Good.
After the fall.
Yeah, we're trying.
He just needs to be let in the building and stuff.
Yeah, no.
Great.
People.
And he'll do an energy efficiency audit.
Yeah, I just honestly, I don't want to stretch ourselves too thin because we really just need to focus on this construction stuff and give it a, give it a 100%. And then when it starts raining, give that energy, that G, subject our full attention to. Because it deserves it.
It deserves it, absolutely.
It's worthwhile, it's worthwhile for you, it's just we need time.
I try to remind folks, we can, we can do anything. This is a really talented staff, and we can do anything. We can't do everything. And, and we just can't.
You can't do it all at once either.
And you can't do it all at once, but, you know, we do our best and.
We want to do it really well when we do it, so we just have to.
Yeah, and I hate to, I mean, I get what you're saying, Greg, too, but I almost kind of like, when I see those firms, I'm like, they're obviously making money somehow, and they're making it by usually getting a percentage. And I kind of feel like we, it's not like we're Santa Rosa that have money to burn, you know, if we accidentally pay them to do something we, I don't know.
I mean, there's, I mean, there's a couple of different firms that do different things. One of them is a big thing now is they will come, evaluate your system, suggest ways to make your system more efficient that, that require capital outlay. They will then sort of finance the improvement so that your, your yearly cost does not increase to what it now is. And as your costs for energy decrease, you'll be paying the same amount at the end of that period of 10 or 20 years, you'll have, you'll owe the capital improvement that they've done. Those are becoming very popular, those sort of structures. But it's complicated. Those sorts of things are complicated.
Matt, I think.
They're there.
Yeah, and Sonoma Clean Power has at least offered some of their staff time for, you know, at no cost and with no strings attached, when we have time to do that, to, again, just to advise us on maybe some low-hanging fruit areas. But I understand it has to wait until our staff has time.
Yeah, and that's what Jason, Jason is.
Yeah, well, there, so there may be some opportunities that don't lock us in to a private company that's going to take a skin off the top.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
Especially with energy stuff, I think we all see that we need to be very careful.
But we love, yeah, but, you know, we love, we love those opportunities where people, A, do it for free, or B, will take a percentage of the savings so that it's no cost outlay to the city. And those are, those are the kind of things we're like, we're definitely looking for. And those are, those are the kind of things we're definitely looking for.
All right.
Yeah, I have some others that, I think they fall halfway in between a member report and a good and welfare, so I'm just going to do them in no particular order. One was that the hometown celebration was just last Friday, and it was really very wonderful. It was well-attended and amazing array of booths and musicians and everything, so I loved that. And well, Willets Economic Localization was there, but we also have just recently painted two more trash bins. Both of them have gone through the process to be approved. One was a beautiful redwood forest scene down near the Taco Bell, just gorgeous. And the other one is a quilt that was painted by the quilters right across the street over here in City Park. And we have some other plans going forward. We had a painting party, a lot of people are still painting fire hydrants, and so it's, that project is going, going ahead. Another really important, I think, announcement is that tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, 6 to 8, is a town hall with our supervisor, John Hascheck. And he will give a little state of the county report, and he will also answer questions and take suggestions. And he's very responsive, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the public to interact with our supervisor. And that's at the Little Lake Grange tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe that's it for me.
Anybody else have any good and welfare?
I have some, a report, I would like to report on the Redwood Trail. And Stephanie did a really great job of presenting our particular portion of the Redwood Trail and did a really good job. And I don't know how anybody can go to the meeting and not get all excited about it because it's going to be an economic plus for Willets when it all happens. I'm just worried that I'm not going to be here because it's going to take too long. And that's the thing that bothers me, is I'm certainly not going to be able to walk the trail. So I've started to think about, I'm going to have to ride a horse or something. But it's, it's not going to be anything instantaneous, and I was hoping that we would get a little faster on it. But I just wanted to let everybody know that it's still a wonderful thing that's going to happen for all of us. And it will really help us as a community, because if we don't mess this up, it'll be a real boom to end all the town. The town will really be known, and because we're the last city on the, on the trail before you get to, you know, up the road. Good and Welfare, I would like everybody to know that I really enjoyed myself at the, at the race, the Great Race. And I, other than about 10 people in the cars, I shook hands as Vice Mayor for the City of Willets with everybody that brought in a car, over 100.
Wow.
And I was later told by a lady that was in one of the cars that we were the only city that actually greeted them by shaking their hands and welcoming them to Willets. And it was really fun. I was surprised at the different variety of people and cars, and everybody was just absolutely wonderful. Some of the people are really adventurous. I told earlier in the, before the meeting started, there was two guys that drove a '44 Ford sedan from New York City down to where it started, drove it up, or is driving it up to the state of Washington. When they get through with that, then they're going to drive it back to the state of New York. This is a flathead 1940 Ford truck car, two four-door sedan. And then I met two people from Switzerland, that they were in Oldsmobile, and it was a light blue, and it was just wonderful to talk to them. They flew over, rented the car, and are driving it. And I just thought that was really neat to talk to them also. So there were people from all over. And I was interested in the Model As, of course. And there's a company that is in Colusa that did everybody's, what they call it, overdrive, a Mitchell overdrive. And whether you were in New York, or whether you were in Texas, or whether you were in Willets, everybody gets their, their transmission in a Model A from the same people. And they, I forgot to ask them, when they went through Colusa, that's where the people are, and I'll bet you that none of them knew that they were within 400 yards of this place. And I'm sorry that I didn't tell them that. Anyhow, thank you very much for listening.
I have a good and welfare. I just wanted to give a public shout-out to Willets residents Kevin, Alana, and Brianna, who took it upon themselves to mow the Willets dog park. It looks fantastic. They did an amazing job. And Hannah Eisenstein at East Hill Veterinary Clinic actually helped offset the cost for those folks. So thank you so much to them for making the dog park look great and usable for visitors and residents alike.
Nice.
You do?
No, just that I've been hearing lots of good things about the energy in our community, from Paint the Town to the Great Race, to new businesses that are popping up around. And, yeah, music and fire. Lots of good things happening in Willets. So there just seems to be an uplifting feeling in our community that good things are happening.
Wow. Apparently, they mowed the thing.
Oh, you know I did. I got pictures sent to me.
So, the only thing I want to say is just a reminder to TV Land out there, and I'm sure the Willets News will put it out, that when they do that detour route, I always hope that they never have to tow any cars, because that makes people unhappy. But at the same time, they've only been doing it for at least the 30-something years I was with the police department, we towed cars that we didn't want to tow them. So I always hope we never have to tow a car, and people will not park there.
For the parade?
For the parade, yeah. So, and this year, I guess, we'll have volunteers doing the parade route, but I'm sure the police will be helping with making sure nobody's obstructing there. So, so just kind of a shout-out to please everybody, remember to don't park your cars there, and if you clear your trash can, some folks leave their stuff out all week long, and so it's available for the public to move.
That's actually a really good comment and question, Jerry. I was wondering, for example, on my street, I see people who have their waste cans out. Is that a police enforcement issue when citizens won't remove their trash cans and they leave them out 365 days a year? Is that something that you should call solid waste?
It'd be more of a neighborly thing to contact them.
What if they?
In the road, blocking the roadway.
Okay, let's.
Not a parking spot.
Let's say that you've contacted them and they have no desire to move their cans. What would be the next step for a citizen?
I don't think we have an actual ordinance as well. Some places say, I've seen some cities that have ordinances that say you can put them out on trash day and they need to be rolled up off.
We don't have currently.
No, so the only thing you have is the blocking the sidewalk. The problem is that's, you know, kind of like the guy that parks there next to Safeway.
What if they're on the city street, they're not on the sidewalk?
They're not a vehicle, so you really can't tag them for 72 hours, so. And so, and they're movable, so nothing says you can't move the trash can and park in front of their house. So, you know, they may not like it, but, you know, that's, that's not illegal, you know? So hopefully, people would be better neighbors. I just, you know, in the spirit of the frontier days thing, is some folks just forget, and it's like, it's probably the week not to forget to roll up your garbage so that people can walk there. Be nice.
All the weeks, it would be nice if people were like.
Nights, yeah, I know. But, maybe that's.
Why don't they put us in charge? Go away.
And so without any more good and welfare, and I see no closed session, I guess we'll adjourn for the night. Thank you very much.